It would be nice to have this meeting outside on a nice warm grass and in the sunshine, wouldn't it? Just one announcement for the board, and that is to remind you that Friday, the 3rd of May, we're going to tour our new schools for a couple hours. So that'll be good, that'll be fun. Hopefully it'll be dry that day.
To East of Westfield.
And I did notice that over at our new elementary, that the city started to work on some sidewalks.
That might make... yeah.
Superintendent, go ahead.
Bear with me, I'm gonna address you from over here.
Okay.
Mr. Bill? All right, great board, good evening. It's good to see you all. Dave and I are going tag team tonight. We're gonna try to change things up a little bit, especially during the six o'clock meeting. But we wanted to take you through in a more intentional way where we're at with our strategic plan and some of the things we've been landing on. And it's pretty difficult to see right up there on the screen, but you have this handout in your folder that says, there we go, right behind you if you wanna crank your neck. We have what are called our core four. Let me explain really quickly to you. As part of our strategic plan, we are required to have core values, a mission and vision statement. And then you'll remember, we had a special board study session where we asked you for some input, and we have put together a couple of choices for you tonight that we'd love you to have your feedback on regarding a statement from the board to put in the strategic plan. So what Dave and I are gonna do is just take you through the four values that we landed on. There's been a lot of work that have gone into these, and so we'll take you through. These are the four values we feel like we would like to use as a guidepost, so to speak, as we walk through our direction for the district moving forward. So, top of the list there is character. We felt like as a district, if we could have at the core of our organization a commitment to integrity, honesty, and trust, that that would be where we needed to tie everything to. We embody the unwavering spirit, acquire and face challenges, persevere through adversity. By embracing these values, we cultivate resilience and courage to pursue meaningful achievements and personal growth. So we're gonna lace character initiatives throughout our strategic plan and tie it to that one core value. And I'll turn it, I'm gonna have Dave break this up for me.
I'm actually excited to do my part, but two seconds before I do, it was fun after we had done this with the administrators the other day, how many of them came up at the end and said how much they were appreciative of the core values that were underlying, you know, the foundations of everything that the district is representing and stands for. So commitment, we offer robust educational experiences that empower students to be future-ready through inspired learning, exploration, and innovation in safe learning environments. My favorite line, our educators and leaders know how to challenge each other and their students, and they're care enough to do it. I do think at the heart of our institution are the educators and leaders who are caring for and loving those kids.
Dave, we've got two more Cs here. Connection, we felt like in Weaver School District, we are known for our ability to connect with each other, with our kids, so we wanted to make sure that we celebrated that, but also put a very bold statement in around connection. So we cultivate strong connections through collaboration and professional learning. We understand that a true sense of belonging comes when one's individuality and unique story are cherished and celebrated. And here's my favorite part of the statement, we welcome all dreamers, learners, leaders, and achievers. In Weaver, everyone is welcome, and we belong to one another. We wanna make sure every one of our school settings, everybody that walks through the door feels that. That is one of the core four.
And there are so many facets of the wonderful community that we're a part of that we couldn't leave that piece out either. Could you roll up just a tiny bit for me, Dr. Trent? Just a little tiny bit? Thank you. We are proudly rooted in our community, dedicated to preserving our rich traditions while welcoming new ideas. We partner with parents and families and local industry to create a collaborative, supportive network aimed to sustain the academic development and health of every child. We encourage community engagement and a steeped mutual respect. Together, we nurture the full potential of each other and create a perfect future for all.
So, board, we will be presenting in May and in June the other components of the strategic plan. These are more the guiding posts that we've landed on to this point. There's still a draft form, I'd love your feedback on it. We sent out some surveys and asked for some feedback around a mission statement and a vision statement. And we sent out some different ideas and options. We by far had the most folks feel like preparing future-ready leaders and learners needed to be our condensed but power-packed visions, uh, mission statement, excuse me. And if you have any heartburn or anything you'd like added to that, but it really is, it encompasses what we're trying to do, and we graduate as students, we want a heading to the world and being ready for what's coming, and be leaders in the world. And then vision statement, the one that came to the forefront, and this was a little closer in terms of the other options, and I think I showed those to you. With character as our guide, commitment as our foundation, connections as our bridge, and community as our strength, we aim to empower all learners to achieve success and realize their fullest potential. We put some of the feedback you gave us into that statement, but we also embedded the core four in that statement that we just covered. So again, I'd love your feedback. If you have ideas, things you'd like to add, I'm open to that. But these statements have really been embedded through a lot of different employee groups to this point. Okay? Lastly, and Trent, if you'll take us to that last page. When we met as a board, and I'll quickly run through this because we have a lot tonight, but I wanted you to look at two options, and we won't spend a lot of time on it in this meeting. One option is a very condensed statement, and it doesn't feel that way because it's five or six lines there, but to get everything in that we felt like you wanted emphasized, we felt like that statement speaks to the different pieces that you all shared with us. I came up, we came up with option two, and I'm gonna ask you to be open to, as you read through option two, to visualize that this could be the introductory page in our strategic plan, where when you open up our strategic plan, the Weaver School Board creates and implements and embodies these things right on the front page. This is what we're about. And so as I went through the feedback that you gave me and gave us during that study session, I tried to kind of weave it through all of these different pieces. So I would ask that you would do me a favor and take a little bit of time on your own, maybe shoot me an email, give me a holler, just give me some feedback on which of the two options you would feel best as a board of education leading out with in our strategic plan about in terms of what we're all about in Weaver School District. Okay? You've got a shorter one, you've got a longer one. The longer one is pretty dense, but it encompasses everything, it really flushes it out that you shared with me. I wanted to point out that an imperative, when you say an imperative, we like that word because it speaks to action. This is what we're going to get done, and as a board, this is what we're gonna make sure gets done. And we put some very strong language in this particular option number two. But you'll notice the out, the bolded pieces, those are the pieces that you gave us some feedback on in terms of really emphasize these pieces, would you, throughout? So, every student deserves individualized attention, we believe in the whole child, we honor the past by saying this on that particular bullet point, that our vision extends beyond test scores and academic achievements in Weaver School District. It encompasses nurturing the whole child, basically is what that says. And I like this one, and this was President Willis, and I hope you don't mind me giving you a shout out, President, but he said, please weave in what we focused on in the past a little bit. So this has been the Weaver Way, and includes cultivating critical thinking, empathy, resilience, and a lifelong love of learning in our students. So we brought, tried to bring the past a little bit. We have another area, empowerment through engagement, trying to make sure our kids are engaged in their own learning, have some autonomy. And then we really wanted to embrace some of the feedback you gave us around technology, and we just, you know, as you know, social media is a blessing and a curse. Technology is a blessing and a curse, depending on how our kids are empowered to use it. But I wanted to read this specific statement because I think it's very powerful. While we embrace the transformative power of technology, we remain steadfast in our commitment to the art of teaching. We want to integrate technology into our classrooms, but throughout, through the very end here, it says, through thoughtful integration, we aim to enrich learning opportunities, all while recognizing that technology is a tool to support and augment, but never replace the invaluable role of excellent teaching. We wanted to, I felt like that maybe hopefully embodied some of your thoughts around technology. One more scroll for me, Trent. And then lastly, and I'm not hitting every piece, but you'll notice that we have a real emphasis by the board on making sure that we connect with all that we serve. There's one shout out to our amazing educators and support staff, and I wanted you to see that because you had expressed to me, several of you, that we need to make sure that they feel that from us. So I put there in the middle, furthermore, we recognize the indispensable role of our district's quality educators, leaders, and support staff. They are the heart and soul of our educational community, tirelessly dedicating themselves to nurturing the growth and potential of every student. So we wanted to make sure that your philosophy, your aims and hopes and aspirations for our students and our educators are embodied. We are open to tweaking either of these options, shortening, lengthening, but we wanna make sure that whatever statement that our patrons look at and whatever statement is made by the board, that it reflects what your desires are. So please give me some feedback as we move through the next couple of weeks, okay? Any questions, board? That's where we are. We'll share some other parts of the strategic plan with you next month, okay? Superintendent?
Yes?
I just wanna say that I stand in amazement at your choice of words and the building of that language used. It was, I know there was a lot of wordsmithing, I know that, that it happens, but it has come up really well and well. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, I appreciate that. And again, we're open to restructuring, but I just wanna make sure you feel your, the passion you have for our district and bodies and what we put before our patrons, and thank you.
Thanks, Superintendent. Moving on, Dr. Peterson.
Trent, could you pull up my sheet?
Did you say any questions?
You'll have to kind of zoom in, I guess, for the smaller, at least on the side views. But boards, you have a copy? Superintendent, I wanted me to walk you through what's gonna happen in the last couple of months, in the next couple of months regarding financing of our projects. We are, as you know, nearing completion of the elementary, the high school, and the junior high, and also we're starting on Roosevelt's rebuild. We have two sources of funding, and they're kind of running simultaneously. In that first section, you've got the lease revenue bonds. This is the local building authority, and that's primarily for Roosevelt Elementary. And then in that second section to your right, you've got the regular GO bonds. This is the 279 million that was approved in the election. And that primarily is used for Westfield High, Mountain View, and Haven Bay Elementary. Some other things are complete. On Wednesday, October 4th, 2023, we passed a primary resolution that allows us to go to the market for the GO bonds. And on Monday, April 8th, we published a notice, this is just this Monday, of economic impact in the hearing for May 1st board meeting, and that's complete. We published that to our website and other places that need you to know. Also, the next thing then on the calendar is today is a statement postponement of the economic impact. We were going to have, oop, my microphone came off, I'm gonna, we were going to have that last month, or I mean today, but we decided with all that was going on with this agenda today, it would be best just to do that on May, where it's not so full. So at the bottom of our agenda, you'll see that we're postponing that till the May 1st board meeting. And so that's complete. Jumping down to Wednesday, May 1st, we'll have a hearing on that day. We'll put on our local building authority hat, and we'll have a hearing, and this is required by law to receive the economic impact of the new bill. And in this case, it's Roosevelt Elementary. There really is no economic impact that a hearing is required by law because some cities or counties, they'll, the classic example is they'll raise money for a recreation center, and that could impact local gyms and private sector. And so our school is not impacting any other business. And so that hearing will be required. I would be surprised if we have any comments on that hearing. Also, next month, we have to have a statement of intent to issue lease revenue bonds. This is a new requirement by Senate Bill 86. And we also have to set a June 12th hearing for our local building authority to issue lease revenue bonds, and we'll do that at this June 12th meeting. All those things go quickly. There's Ryan Bjorky, our attorney, will give us exactly what we need to say and how it goes, and he'll be here to help guide us. Then you can see, the next three or four items are all dealing with issuing our last issue of bonds. We have about $40 million to go in the $279 issue, and those things on the right really don't involve any board members, but they're just there for your information. On Wednesday, May 1st, there may be a need for a follow-up resolution at the May 1st board meeting. Ryan Bjorky is getting back to us on that. Wednesday, May 29th, as per Senate Bill 86, we have to put a first advertisement, we have to start advertising for the public hearing to be on June 12th. And we have to put it in those places, the Weaver School District website, the public notice site, it has to be posted in our office, and the standard examiner has to be in that, the standard examiner. Then jumping down to Wednesday, June 5th, we have to have the second advertisement in the standard examiner. And these advertisements are not so blaring and scary as Truth and Taxation. They just say that we're having a hearing, we're gonna implement a lease revenue bond. But Truth and Taxation actually says you're gonna have a tax increase. And nevertheless, we have to put them in the paper. On June 12th, if you keep on going down on your left, we'll have, at that board meeting, the last of this year, we'll have our public hearing, Senate Bill 86, and then we'll put on our local building authority hat, and we'll adopt resolutions and dealing with that. Once again, Ryan Bjorky will walk us through that. That public hearing basically is to tell the public what we're gonna do with the lease revenue bonds. And we've been telling the public all along, we're Billy Roosevelt Elementary. That's what we're doing with lease revenue bonds. And as you recall, we lowered the debt service tax rate and raised the capital rate to pay for those, and it's tax neutral, it's tax neutral to the public, no tax increase involved. Then in July, we'll close and receive the funds, and Weaver School District, Steve Buller and Chapman Carter will be involved in that. We're gonna close on the bonds, our last $40 million from the bonds on Tuesday, June 25th. This is kind of a calendar. I finally had to put it on a visual where I could follow along because we kept on getting the two things mixed up. We've got the GO bonds over here, the lease revenue bonds over here, and they're kind of, things are happening. And so this is a calendar that we can kind of follow along, and if it's needed to be updated, we'll update and send you one just so you're in the loop. But I presented this to Gina the other day, and then she said, yep, that's exactly what we've been looking for as a calendar, so we can follow it. And so that's the calendar, President, and that's all I have. And so in the next two meetings, we'll have involvement at the May 1st meeting and at the June 12th meeting.
Wonderful, thank you, Dr. Peterson. Mr. Mitchell, please.
All right, good evening, board president and board members. The first time I'll be up here tonight is to talk about a request that came to Roy High School from prominent community members and numerous prominent community members around the opportunity of looking at naming Roy High School's baseball field after longtime coach Fred Thompson. The request came with quite a few...
He was a trader.
Let's see, I'm gonna pull up. Quite a few pieces of information around what that coach has meant in the past. So he coached from 1974 to 1994 at Roy High. During that time, he was part of 16 region championships, a couple state championships, and baseball loan, six region titles. He ranks 11th all-time in the state in wins as a baseball coach, and he's a member of the Utah High School Sports Hall of Fame. There are some recommendations from community members where they talk about the entire Roy community has been touched on some level by Coach Thompson, his family. And so what we would ask as per Policy 6600 is to open a committee to discuss the possibility of looking at the naming of Roy High School's baseball field after Coach Fred Thompson. We'd ask that board member Morell be part of that committee as a representative of that area and follow that according to the policy with me as the chair of the policy as the committee by, or chair of the committee as the committee by.
I don't think we have a 6600. Heidi, what did it get changed to? It's not listed on the...
It is still under 6600.
It is still under 6600?
Yeah, we're revising it next month.
Okay, all right, just make the... It's just not listed on the website.
We had taken it out, we appealed it, but now we're enacting it, we need a corporate, strong process.
They did, yeah.
Can I just reinforce what Mr. Mitchell stated? And I have had several community members approach me about this this year, and there is not a name for that field currently, and they're very anxious to get that moving forward. And so the work that he has done for that is appreciated, and the community is aware that they're looking, we're looking at it, so I appreciate that effort.
I believe that's on your consent calendar.
Is the scoreboard long enough we could put a swear word in between his name? He was good at it, I'm just telling you, he was good at it.
I think he's moved past...
Yes, we'd like to be able to...
Dan, he went to Fremont.
We'd like to be able to put the committee together soon and work to over the next month, try and bring a recommendation from the committee if that's what they move the direction would be.
Well, while you're still standing there, we'll invite Mary Jo Williams up.
Pretty much.
Board, can I just interject before Mary Jo and Brock approach you? I wanted to just set the stage for him a little bit. You remember last year, we came to you and asked you to consider looking at a school schedule change, especially at the secondary level. As we've been going through this strategic planning process, we've received a lot of feedback from both elementary and secondary educators around their absolute need and desire to have more time to collaborate, to plan, to develop their teaching skills, and just be better responsive to children. And so we have been pulled together behind closed doors a lot in the last little while trying to figure out, how could we build more time into a schedule, a monthly schedule, that would impact the elementary level and the secondary level in the ways that we are being, almost, there's almost a plea, I would call it, to that degree, a plea for more flexibility of time. So I've asked Mary Jo and Brock to speak to kind of what it could look like as a proposed schedule for next year from the elementary perspective and the secondary perspective.
So one of my favorite quotes is by Maya Angelou, and it is, "Do the best you can until you know better, then when you know better, do better." And I think that our teachers and our staff want to do better, and it's our responsibility to help them improve their practice, and professional development affords us the opportunity to do that. This isn't a new idea. A few years ago, the schedule was adjusted to provide 10 more minutes daily to be used for professional development, but what we need is a larger chunk of time dedicated to professional development. As we've had discussions, we feel like this is possible, and it allows us to still be in compliance with the required 990 hours of instructional time from our work rule. The paper I shared with you has a lot of just information and highlights some of the key points about the plan and why we're looking at it and what we think would work. I know that there was also a lot of information shared in the agenda to give you some background information on that. Our problem in elementary right now is that we have such limited time available for school-level professional development. After we look at the negotiated agreement, we really have about 30 minutes on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday to provide professional development for our teachers and our staff. And in that time, there's also a lot of other meetings that are competing for that same time. So we feel like maybe the adjustment in the Wednesday schedule would allow us to come up with an hour of dedicated time for ongoing and better professional development. And then like I said, there's just a lot of benefits that we've listed on the paper. So that's a little bit of the perspective from elementary.
Mary Jo, can I just ask you, would you articulate to the board what the difference would be on Wednesday? What would Wednesday look like versus what it looks like now?
So right now, we dismiss at 1:15 on Wednesday, and then for the negotiated agreement, our teachers have 2.5 hours of preparation time that we are not allowed to hold any type of, anything really, meetings, professional development, because that time's been allocated for them to use for professional development. So if we dismiss at 1:15, by the time we get our students on the bus and on their way home safely, that puts us to about 1:30, and at 1:30 to 4 o'clock would be that two and a half hours that's allocated to them for their professional development for the negotiated agreement. Moving forward, instead of dismissing at 1:15, we would dismiss at 12:15, and that would allow us to have still get our kids out and get them home safely, have an hour that would be dedicated to professional development that would end at about 1:30, and then they would still have their two and a half hours of prep time.
And from the secondary standpoint, a few of the key highlights to talk about, when we looked at the opportunity to move Rocky Mountain and Mountain View to a block schedule, we talked about the alignment of school schedules, and that would continue to move this in that direction. Right now, we have some junior highs that have some different alignment of their class periods. If we were to go to the proposed schedule that we're looking at, because of the 990, we'd wanna make sure that we're very direct on what those schedules would be to ensure that we're meeting those 990 hours. So it's something where we'd actually help to align even closer from all the schools. That's one key point there. Research tells us that for professional development, the PLCs to happen most effectively, we would like to have our teachers meeting weekly. Right now, we have our teachers at the secondary level meeting every other week, and by the time they meet the second time, the data from two weeks ago is not usable anymore because they've already moved on past those topics. And so to move to weekly conversations with those departments allows that data to be much more effectively used within the classroom. We also have at the secondary level, teachers that teach multiple classes. You know, if you think an English teacher, they're gonna teach an English 10 and maybe an English AP class, or a Math 2 and a Math 3. And so the way we've had it set up right now is those teachers are really only able to meet with one of those teams because of the every other week. Opening up for more opportunities to meet allows them to meet with those other classes they teach more regularly. And so they're not just basically partners along that class, they're actually active members of that collaborative team. And so we're looking to find ways to make sure that they're fully engaged with those teachers. And then one thing that we ran into even with yesterday, as we try to do professional development with our teachers, the substitutes to fill those classes become a struggle. And so to have more opportunities to be able to pull teachers during this professional development time allows for us not to run into some of those issues, filling our classes with those substitutes, because we're not taking them away from our students, we're actually taking it during the dedicated professional development time. And so that's one other area where we wanna be able to utilize this time effectively. On the secondary level, you guys know that we've met every other week effectively this year. We've released it 12:15, and teachers' contracts at the secondary level generally end at 3:15, so they've got that three-hour window, but only a portion of that is with the students. What we're looking to do is to take the hour from 12:15 to 1:15, put that back into the classes on those Wednesdays that we currently have, but take that hour and move it to the Wednesdays that we currently don't have the early hours. So the two-hour time period was shortened down to one hour, but instead of two hours every other week, it's one hour every week. So we really aren't losing any additional time, we're just reallocating that time to an every week. So we really aren't losing any additional time, we're just reallocating that time to an every-week split out. With that being said, we're looking for a 1:15 release at the secondary level to give our teachers from 1:15 to 3:15 to work within their departments to use the professional development that they have on their professional basis.
Question.
Questions for us?
At the elementary level, it ended at 12:15, when would lunchtime period be?
Lunchtime normally, let's start, it would have to be bumped up a little bit earlier for our Wednesday schedule. Right now, most of our schools have the same lunchtime from Monday through Friday, and that usually ends about 1:00. So if we were dismissing at 12:15, we would have to adjust the lunch schedule to be earlier on Wednesdays.
Because to meet the 180 days, you have to have lunch, is that state law?
So we would still serve lunch on those early out days, yeah. Great question.
So would the kids just skip lunch and meet early? They do anyway. Until we get the new contract.
Just curious, have you had any pushback from parents because of the different schedule or anything like that?
We have it over the last year. I think one thing that we're hearing more from us from our teachers, they don't have that problem. And every school tries to use professional development that they feel is best for their school, which is the belief that I think we all have, we want those schools to be able to work that way. But the schedule, even for their professional development, hasn't been consistent. So those Singleton teachers at the secondary level that may want to reach out to other schools, sometimes it's been a little bit of a hit and miss because those schedules haven't aligned. And with this, we want to be very prescriptive in saying, this is the time that's dedicated for professional development, this is the time that's dedicated for our PLCs. That way, those teachers have those opportunities to reach out. And at the secondary level, we have not heard from the parents.
I was just going to say real quick, Bruce, to your...
Can I just add one thing?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
One of the things that we feel like would be a benefit from this change also is that as we try and move forward and monitor some of the work that we're asking our administrators and our teachers to do, moving to having that dedicated time allows the district to better support all of those teachers and those administrators in the different schools, because they know when they're having their professional development, and it allows us to follow up and monitor those things we're asking them to do.
Well, I was just going to say from a parent standpoint at the secondary level, that every other week is really confusing. Like, my kids yesterday were like, you know it's early out tomorrow? And I was like, no, in fact, I had no idea. So I think that will be helpful for parents at the secondary level, that it's consistent, because we've had some months where we've had three early outs, like in February. And I was like, I was telling Gina, I'm like, I feel like I'm pretty well informed, but the early out schedule gets me every, I have no idea on there. So, I think that'll be great for parents.
Board, I might just ask, and I appreciate the work that these two always do, but specifically to this issue, one of the things that we've also looked outward and looked at what other districts are doing to try to meet the needs of their employees, and we really feel and hear from our employees a lot that they need, they need time to not only be immersed in more meaningful PD, but they need time together. There's a feeling right now that there's a sense of, or lack of connectedness, and we feel like a more frequent time to build in would help with that. We also know that many of the districts we've reached out to have moved to a weekly early out schedule for that reason.
Do you know if we're going to walk the walk in our strategic plan? We better do it right.
We need, yeah, thanks.
We're going to, excuse me, talk the talk, we better walk the walk as well. And connectedness is one of our...
Thank you. So, Board, just for your information, we will circle back in the May meeting and that will likely be a formal action item on the agenda.
Heidi, you're up.
So will that information go out once?
Good evening, Board. We have one policy we're presenting on second reading today, and there were no revisions to this policy, so this one will be quick. That's policy 7145, which is the district personnel electronic device policy. We wrote this policy in response to requests from the legal department to make sure that employees understood what the expectations and parameters were around the use of their personal devices at school. We presented this last month, and there have been no, we have received no feedback, and there have been no changes made to this policy. So we'll be presenting this in the board meeting or an adoption on second reading. We have three additional policies to present on first reading. The first one is policy 4370. It's an existing policy with some updates to comply with the State Board of Education graduation requirements. And then also, we added a new section, section seven, which you can see on page eight and nine, to help the district to develop some objective criteria for the district to determine how to award credit that goes towards graduation for students coming from institutions that are not Weaver School District institutions, or from homeschool. So if students come into our district and see a transfer credit in a manner that does it easily transfer from one school district to another, section nine of this policy allows the credit evaluation committee to look at this objective criteria and evaluate whether or not credit should be granted and that credit would go to worse graduation. That's the primary change in that policy.
Heidi, I just have one comment when I was reading through it before I came. I would have emailed you. Under 8C2, it says, "A student earning a Weaver School District diploma shall not be allowed to participate in their home high school." I'm assuming those are like boundary-accepted students? I just think that needs to be clarified, because it makes it sound like if you're getting a diploma, you can't walk with your homeschool home. Does that make sense to you?
Right, and this is a district diploma as opposed to a high school diploma. So we have high school diplomas, if a student's getting a high school diploma, certainly they walk with their class, but so it's also...
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah. Then we have two new policies that we are asking the Board to take a look at. The first one is a home and hospital policy. We have had a process for providing instructional services to students who are at home and hospital, if they have physical or medical needs that disallows them from the school. We haven't ever had a policy in place. So we thought it would be a good idea to write down the procedures and the criteria that allow us to know what to do and when to provide instructional services to students who are homebound, because they can't come to school. And the last policy is a new policy that was presented from the Media and Public Exhibitions Department, Lincoln's Department. We get a lot of requests for media filming students. Most of it comes from the media, the news, if there's a story, they want to come in and talk to students or talk to teachers. We also get requests from third parties that have nothing to do with the news, but they're doing a special project, and they want to come in and film students or use our schools for filming. And so, up to this point, we've, over the years, developed certain criteria in terms of whether or not to allow that to the district. We want to, of course, make sure that parents are aware and provide any consent. So we put that all into a policy to allow us to refer back to whenever we need the requests from the media or third parties to come in and film our students and our students. Those are our new policies that we'll be talking about in the morning. Any questions?
I think we're good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that finishes up our study session. Let's be back here about 5:02 to get ready to start board meeting. Thank you.